I know one thing of my president. He used to say, I watched in the media and he said, "Go and bring the most difficult question, so that when he don't answer you, and then anybody come who they tell you anyhow for outside, you will tell and say, 'I'm on here and I'm saying, pull yourself and pull myself.' There you're doing."
Sir, I want to ask. In Nigeria today, we have five major problems. We have insecurity, health challenges, housing, transportation, that's bad growth and electricity. Sir, how will your government solve this problem in a way that will be different from the promise of your past government?
In your administration, when you become the president of Nigeria, how will you solve the problem of some of the ethnic segregation in Nigeria, in some of the parts of Nigeria, E.G. like Okogwaram, Laffia, and Ibe, Obi, ICP, and others?
Our incoming president, Ishana, 2023, my person goes like this. All the industries in Nigeria have collapsed, and the foreign industries have let us. How is your government go to solve this so that we, the market women, can be able to buy well and sell easily?
My question number three, and my number two person is that. In this present and past government, like you rightly said before, women are not part of the decision-making. How can women be in your government? My question number three is like this. We, the traders and market women in Nigeria, we have all the things. We have the qualification, anyhow, in any way, but we are not part of the traders' charter of demand. Now, you all know that we are traders. They bombard us with multiple taxation. But in the office here, the trade and investments, the trade industries, we, traders, we are not part of there, we are not into the office, and they don't recognize us. And we are the traders, but other people occupy our seats.
If you come into presence, into the presence, how can you sit in this our public? We need our attention to this.
I'm so much impressed by your speech. You told us here that women are more in Nigeria, and women are being neglected when it comes into politics. If you recall, sometime last year, March to be precise, Nigerian women celebrated International Women's Day at National Assembly Gates for one month, championed by our national president. We were there, taking our breakfast, taking our lunch, and even dinner. We wanted to stay for more than one month, only that other events came up. Then we left, we are preparing to go back, as we are told. It's even fresh in our legal advice and spine that she's wearing the T-shirt. When we are there with five points agenda, I read from her, citizenship, indigenanship, for we to be recognized where we are married, citizenship, 111 seats for women in the National Assembly, 35% in party leadership, and more appointed positions, both in party and in government. If you discover in party, you are here now. You are here now, there's no woman that came with you. I was expecting woman in here. You came before her. You're part of this, it's not enough. We are asking for 35% of the appointing. I was very happy when my national president said, "You're coming." So we want to put it across to you, because what you are telling us today is what we are going to hold you, like, accountable for. As our charter of demand, when you go in, what plans do you have? How many appointed positions do you have for women other than a woman leader? Or minister of women affairs? Woman can be a minister in petroleum. Woman can be, eh, eh, second general of immigration. Woman can be a chief of staff. And then, now in police, the next vaccine, the most qualified vaccine in police now is a woman. But we've never had woman IG in Nigeria. So you are going to assure us here that this is how many percent you are going to give us, not even talking about the position you are going to give us in your government, because you know that we are going to be in your decision-making table. My number two person. Sir, I will start addressing you as your excellency. I know to you, our president has already instituted door-to-door, never-to-ever, 20-20 campaign, which we have embarked since last year. But I'm surprised that you're telling us that all we did last year, that we are playing, that is now that the war will start. And because of our this door-to-door, I begin to appreciate the over witness people. I don't know if we have one, yeah? Because of the problems they encounter. When they go on their day-to-day, never-to-ever evangelization. Because anywhere we go, marketing you as our best preferred candidate, the question that now comes to mind, ah, people will be mind-blown. Then I begin to ask, why? Is it because of the antecedents as the chief of staff during Sanya Abacha regime? And I begin to ponder, will this antecedent be a way of solving the security problem in this nation? I want you to put those through.
Our questions centered health, housing, bathroom, and electricity. All these are captured in our manifesto. We did not just do what others have done, a copy from somewhere and just put it for people to see in their manifesto. We have ways of handling all each of these and more. But for your own, let me explain so that you can understand. You must have heard me talk about insecurity before, maybe in radio or television. Nigeria's security has gone very bad. It requires surgery, and we have worked on the surgery. Many, many people will not be happy. But when we finish, you will be very proud. You can travel anytime you want, I guarantee you. But here it is. If you take us to protect, to uphold, and secure a country, hot decisions not be taken. I'll give you an example. If this is the most powerful traditional ruler, this is the most powerful former president, most powerful richest person, and they are bigger than those of Nigeria, nobody can touch them. And we know them to have a hand in insecurity in Nigeria. To me, that responsibility, that oath we took, what we have sworn to do before mankind and before God Almighty is exactly what we will do. This former president, this former king, this richest person will first go look squarely. The majority are also human beings. Because they are opportune to have money in their hands and influence, it doesn't mean they are bigger than the laws of Nigeria. And whosoever tells us Nigeria should not be in peace, should be prepared. This I take, and that's where we are. Ethnicity, first of all. In leadership, there are qualities you look for in people who will lead you. Any person who shows you that this is my own, this one is not my own. And then because, for me, say for example, I'm a houseman. It's God who created me from there. Who gave me the mother, father he gave me. I was brought up there. But I'm talking of a country, and I'm talking of my preparedness to provide leadership. Then I will now say, okay, there is somebody in Aquai, or any part of Nigeria. Oh, no, 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 I'm not from Aquai, I'm from Nigeria. I only know Hausa people. Never elect such a person, never trust such person, never ever. Any person who segregates, who, who show that I am more here than here, don't trust them. Any day you see me do that, carry me, put me in the dirtiest sack from the market, go to ocean or throw me fire away and to the farm and to the houses of sharks, because you should not trust me. If I'm not coming to unite, if I'm not coming to do justice, if I'm not coming to carry all along, if I'm not coming to understand the pains of the people, if I'm not coming to be sensitive to what I have sworn to do for the people, really, if you elect me, you are the ones that are responsible. For any day you see I say, ah, because I am a northern, so I don't northern small, then I shouldn't be trusted at all. Everybody is your own. Not only Nigerians. We should be broad-minded, we should be seen African, we should be seen the whole humanity. Just to humanity is part of what you require. After all, Nigeria required the support of other countries around the world for Nigeria to be. So that responsive attitude of leadership to humanity, talk less of Nigerians. I have not prayed for, but if God give us leadership, then somebody may from outside decide to be a Raska or from Zubin Nigeria, and deliberately touch any Nigerian that we know that is a Nigerian. Then you will understand whether we have responsibility or not. The issue of insecurity, Okogwaram, Irsua, blah, 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 the Bandits and the rest. I talked before, I don't know if you are bad, they are sponsored. Those sponsoring them are here. Their friends are outside Nigeria. I give reasons as to why they were killing people in Kaduna because of a certain store in Southern Kaduna. They would just come overnight and then give some chippeen at 3 million actually in the base of boys. The boys don't know what they are doing. They bring containers and ask them to take hold of Kaduna state. Say, okay, on so-so date, shoot these Fulanis. On so-so days, you see this village and that village, go and shoot them at same night. You shoot here, you shoot here. Then they will come back and tell newspaper, I can start it. Some Japanese have already been prepared. This thing will happen in the night. The seven misspellers will carry it, you read it in the morning. It don't happen at all. How did they know? Are they spirit? And that is what people don't understand in Nigeria. So if they shoot, the villagers run away. The Fulanis will run away also. The police, the soldiers also will run away trying to now take over. While this is going on, these boys are there on this mountain, loading in the sacks given to them, and now loading containers, we rob them. How much is roading of today? How much is a kilogram of a roader? You can book what is roading. You have telephones. Sir, last week it was what? Four hundred and something thousand per kilogram dollars. So how much is one sack? How much is one container? How much is 50 containers? How many did they take in a month? And it's going on, and it's white men, and these containers, every day they are going to Ababa Port, Tinkam Port, from here. Potaco, Wari, eh, eh, ports. They all go there and take off from there. It's expensive. For you to know how God has blessed your country, unless you sit down and do your homework, then you continue to thank God Almighty more. We are supposed to be one of the most respected people in this world, Nigerians. But today we are disrespected because they prove to them that we are poor, while we are extremely rich. So the issue of insecurity is deliberate. And then if there is a tree, you want to remove this tree. And the roots of this tree are deep inside. Unless you go to the root, this tree will continue to regerminate. We will go to the root and come back from the homework we have done with industrialization or why the industries collapse. I just gave you one of it, is the issue of non-happen power. And I gave you the trick they were doing in making sure that power doesn't get to the industries. That's why today, all businessmen who have had industries cannot continue on full because it's expensive, you don't make profit. So they are forced to close, they are closed. So no employment, nothing. People go to Ghana. There is only one state in Nigeria today where a former president who is from that state, before he left office, he now want to drop pipe from gas and he took it to that state. It is that gas that is happening to industries. That's why if we want to make profit, we have to go to that state and sign to industry. And only place because the power is stable and it's cheap. We will do it for Nigeria. Your industries will come, the industries you will work with, the industries you are going to work with will be supportive to Market Women Association. It will be supportive to farmers. What you produce, they will take. That is the same money will come here with you. Now, women's, women's role, even though these questions were asked by many, women's role in our government, I wish you know. Number four, no, first, I was what I talked about section 28 in the constitution to be amended. It's a big thing. The rights of women, support, welfare scheme, training, skill acquisition for women with state forms, mandatory, and it will become law. They refuse to put it for many reasons. Because the more aware Nigerians are, the more the tips will stick. The more the participation of women, and especially all poor people, men and women, the more you know, the less are the chances of the tips that we know in Nigeria, yeah, this only. So 35% of affirmative action, I talked about it when we had a meeting with women. There was a sitting we had with women. That alone is not enough. Today, there are eight points agenda being sponsored by United Nations Women, where the ones that captured it first in our manifesto, I talked about it when I met women, I said, "We stand by that." African women sat down and came up with their own requirements. We anchored our position with that. West African women came up from eco-ist countries with their own agenda and demands within eco-ist countries. We are the only ones who anchored with that. Nigerian women problems, we are the ones who itemize them. From skill acquisition and then having political institutions in every politic, in every zone for women. Skill acquisition centers in every senatorial zone for women. Direct empowerment, as soon as you go, for example, if you are a trader, just go to that skill acquisition center, come with that, they will give you a certificate. There are bonds specific from this money from the stones will be selling. These bonds are powerful, but they are not meant for profit. Just show this certificate. You will be given the money you require, you just sign. You will not pay until five years later when you begin to pay. Then, if you want market, you want shop, where do you want it? There is a board that will do this for you, and the board is part of government. Do you know whether your association will form part of this group? You don't know? You don't know? But I tell you with all kinds of respect, you are. So once you take this loan, you'll be assisted to have the rest. In five years, you will now be turning around the money. If you want more money, go back with this certificate to show them to come and examine what you have done with the loan given to you. If they realize that you performed well, one of the provisions in that certificate is to show that if you have done more than enough within the timeframe given to you, then you shall have a reduction in the loan you take of 20%. So the more you improve, the lesser you pay, and the longer the time. That's the plan we have to us. We believe all Nigerians who have been cheated from 1960 to today, that's the way to day back. The real thing is that it is your money. It is your own money, it's nobody's money. The fact that God said you will now lead the country, it doesn't mean the resources of the country is your own. No, you are only a laborer, you are only a servant. Yours is to provide leadership as how people will utilize their resources. People will go and sit as if they are emperor, emperors. They only know, we will kill that idea, that attitude. That cannot be. It's the management of people's resources would fear of God, sense of accountability, and true to itself and for the people. Anything outside that is gimmick, is stealing. So people will just say, "I approve this, I took my money." Who the hell tell you it's your money? It's people's money. It's people's money. So we have this as a plan. So for women to believe that today, I'm not forcing because I'm a candidate. I don't think there is anybody who must elaborate for women that we have decided what we have because others are helping from the sweat we have done. The issue of tax, you talked about, tax to traders. If I tell you the dirty games they are playing with tax in Nigeria will be here tomorrow. For some of us, we have something to show, even in a court of law, how they are treating Nigeria. There is something they call tax connected from people and tax related to government. Only God knows the balance. What the balance is like 95% they share. So the issue of review on tax, on tax generation, because I saw much they connect, it ends in the pockets of some few people in states like in Abuja. Few civil servants at the office of the Minister don't share it. We know. It doesn't go to government commerce, and it's illegal. Most of the taxes are illegal. So to us, there will be exemptions, and that will be spelt out. So think, when it comes to the burden of tax for market, women, and farmers, just think we are together. Women, we have a plan. The day you went to National Assembly, it is in our manifesto. That Women's Day shall be public holidays in Nigeria. Shall be public holiday, it will be observed for tools to enhance that assertion of dignifying a woman. Second, to recognize and respect the spirit of motherhood in women. And then to also know that subsequent leadership should understand and now respect the position of woman in our society. So that is a promise. The actual campaign in one of your last questions started last week. I'm talking about presidential candidates. I'm talking about political parties. I don't mean our supporters. All you have been doing is plus, plus, plus for us. And all they have been doing is minus, minus for them. That is political parties and candidates. I give you an example. They went to Kanu last week to serve big crowd, correct? But when we now went to investigate, because it is only normal that you should know what your opponents are doing. Now, we were ashamed of what they saw and what we had. People were given 2,000 naira, Kanuda state, Katseanu, Jugawa, Kepi, Yobe. They arranged vehicles from Transport Union. They gave them bread, bottle of Coca-Cola, and sardine at dinner. They now went, in the morning, bread, Akara was given with Coca-Cola. On the issue of fertilizer, they have been destroying Nigeria. And we discovered this in 1995. That is to say, there is one single central mixture for fertilizer in Nigeria. It's bringing the certification in the north and it's promoting oil erosion in the south. We discovered that they don't test the soil to know the ingredients in terms of mixture. Because the fertilizer in swampy area is different from savanna area. It's different from where you have little desert. It is the soil that determines the mixture, otherwise it destroys the land. You have a fertilizer. If you begin to use it, they will grow faster, but by time you begin it to begin to diminish. And that fertilizer is called chemicalizing fertilizer. It shows they are chemicalizing your soil. It shows they are destroying you. It shows in 20 years, 50 years, 30 years, you can only be importing food from Waybo to yourself. Oil boy is killing you slowly. It's creating market for his children who will come and govern their country tomorrow. We discovered this in 1995. And that was why, it was one of the reasons why when zoning Nigeria into city camp, we conceived this idea. And today, the city of political forms have still been used. And as God Almighty will have it, this idea is in my head, and they accepted it, and everybody is using it today. Nobody discovered that we are using C. Jones. But one of the reasons is agriculture, and how to have enough food to ourselves. That's why, if there is fertilizer to be made, it should be original to the soil of the earth. But today, up to this moment, they do it centrally. Nobody is raising any eyebrow, nobody is raising questions. China made that mistake before. China was using one central fertilizer before they got to realize it. That is why, among countries in the world that may not last the next 20 years intact is China, and it's because of fertilizer. They were trying to grow food fast, and they were using one central fertilizer, and today erosion, soil erosion, mudslide is disturbing China. It's the fertilizer they use before. That's why Chinese are sending people to different parts of the world to do joint venture in having food. And many of the Chinese do, they take it back home to feed their people. So we too should now be careful to have a responsive government to be able to know this game of chemicalizing our soil and getting correction. That is to say, fertilizer meant for southeast is meant for southeast. It will protect the land, it will not promote soil erosion. For south-south, for northeast, for southwest, for north-central, for north, uh, northwest. That is how it should be. We should be scientific in what we're doing and enforce it. But there are companies around that are selling it. They produce fertilizer here. Before you know it, it's in south-south. It's not meant for south-south soil, it's killing the soil. And tomorrow, you see houses sliding, and erosion coming up every day, and we keep complaining, "Why we are low on grain?" So to us, we know this already long before now. And then, the issue of cost is not only allowing farmers to go into buying fertilizer. You should have talked to us on it. Why, where are you producing your fertilizer from? Is it one you are buying from Morocco? Or the illegal ones that has license has been given to some certain people that they are not being supervised? Or is it the national one? Which one is corrected? Which one is supervised properly with the care of Nigeria? How can fertilizer be this expensive? Where is that support to farmers? So to also have a packet for farmers, it's not only fertilizer, and they have to make it cheaper. You have to do it at home, you have to decentralize it to numerous places. This fertilizer is original to this soil, anything outside here is capital offense. Then it should be produced here, our people should be involved. On the supervision and watching it, farmers should be involved. That is how it is done in civilized world, and Nigeria should be one. Protection of farmers going to farm and back. Now modern farming, that's why didn't you talk about modern farming? Because today is science, you don't have to take your hope to go under the sun and suffer. Your health is given away, nobody cares, you spend many hours, you produce less. There are machines today. The question is, where shall we synergize with? In active lines, a part of what we have done is to have gone to far Asia and understood what they are doing. The farming implements, our farmers' association of Nigeria shall synergize, and this will come. The issue of having also land to utilize for farming is also another. Because it's difficult to get found, it's expensive, it should be arrangements to move farmers to and from, arrangements of preserving your products, silos in numerous locations cheaper. The issue of empowerment to power, to farmers, for them to take off, and to know that between now and twenty years, farmers' association can only look inwards. Then you look at two things, what Nigerians are consuming, and what you are going to export to countries that are need. So you know what you are going to plan to be exporting, and what it should be eating. And finally, is the issue of modern day farming, what is it? Irrigation, when rainy season comes, utilize it. When rainy season goes, irrigation. You have eh, drill of bore holes, and continuously using windmills pour water on the land. So you can farm on food, and food will be cheaper. Farmers will be, will be richer. And, and there is also an arrangement that didn't say, we manage our ability. In our plans is to direct you. Anybody who thinks of dredging with nature, with ability will be attacked. We conceived this idea before, Tana Abacha approved it, he never lived to see it. If you dredge, that is to say, ships from anywhere in the world can come into the hinterland. Go to Benue, go to Gogi, go to Onichar. All the products in Onichar, all the industries on Onichar, will be using this gas for their industries cheaper. They will take all the goods and services, farmers, the traders there in Onichar, the manufacturers, the soldiers in Onichar, will have ships by themselves. The ships will pass to Gogi, they have their take, in Benue they take, they go to Yebon. Ships will come all to Algoni. All in between states, you can have ports. Farmers, Cassaba, Ryam, whatever they want outside, you load it in a ship, it's cheaper. You take your money in hard caras. So farmers will be very, very, very rich in Nigeria from our plans. But, but the moment to talk about, ah, okay, they know. In nineteen ninety-seven, when the idea of dredging was signed and given to one of the countries that has the biggest capacity to dredge faster than any country in the world, was given. Unfortunately, with all respect, they created a group of them then against Onichar. But the idea of dredging wasn't Onichar's own, it's our own, we is small ones, we are smaller ones. They attacked their Onichar with two, it was coming to destroy Ababa Port and Tinkam Port. So southwest was not going to get the money, and all the money will be going to the hinterland. Money that comes to Nigeria, is for Nigeria. Why fight? Why not allow your country to be dignified? But the people who conceive this propaganda are one, two, three persons, they now give it to the media. Until tomorrow, everybody is afraid to do dredging. Take note, dredging is part of development of Nigeria. Every Nigerian shall benefit from infrastructure, we will get that done. And then last question, talk about, is on the issue of voters' education. And I think those concerned have taken lot of it. We have the DJ Aboya in our own site with what they are doing across Nigeria. You also have from your leadership, educated people to know that Action Alliance is number two, and the voters' register is next. So people should be dedicated to praying for number two.